Chloe.
I used to work perfect a lot, six pounds, three ounces.
This is small.
All right, we are streaming. I'm going to start recording in a minute. It's five fifty-nine. All right, we are streaming and recording.
All right, it is six o'clock. I will call the Monday, November eleventh, regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Kevin Jensen.
Here.
Miriam Barbara.
Here.
Bert Richard.
Here.
Nellie Shire.
Here.
Doug Kuchko. Diane Cozer.
Here.
Don Cuskey.
Here.
Steve Bowman. Oh, sorry, that was still on the list there. Phil Henkel.
Here.
All right.
And was a proper notice given for this meeting?
Yes, please be advised that public notice of this meeting as required by sections nineteen point eight four and sixty-five point nine zero of the Wisconsin statutes has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper and the Rice Lake Chronotype, to the Oak Clear Leader, and to radio stations WJMC and WAQE indicating the date, time, and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. It does appear that a proper notice was given for this meeting. Now if you would stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are at the appearance section. We have one individual who's signed up. So Mr. Adams, if you'd like to come to the podium, and you'll have three minutes to address the board. And just to let you know that because it's not on the agenda as a topic, we are not able to respond to your input.
All right.
But thank you for being here.
Hello, my name is Steve Adams, and I'm a teacher at Rice Lake High School. I teach business education, marketing education, and math classes. This is my ninth year in Rice Lake and my thirteenth year overall as an educator. Previously, I was a business professional for twenty-three years. I was a CPA at Arthur Andersen and Deloitte and Touche, where I managed their investment advisory services practices for the Minneapolis offices. I moved to Rice Lake, Wisconsin in two thousand and five to run a business, and then had the desire to give back, and I became an educator. In addition to passing the CPA exam on my first attempt, I was also named one of the top CPAs in Minnesota for two years in a row. Since becoming an educator, I was the Financial Literacy Teacher of the Year in two thousand and fifteen, shortly before I came to Rice Lake to teach. I've coached T-ball, baseball, basketball, and golf. I was a den leader in Cub Scouts, the troop master in Boy Scouts. I have volunteered for the parent group at Jefferson, at Saint Joe's, and I've served on several referendum planning teams for the district. Since joining Rice Lake, I have taught at the high school and the charter school. I have taught virtually all the math classes we have, many business classes. I've taught summer school for at least five years. I was the robotics advisor for four years. I have announced sports games, including soccer, basketball, softball, swimming, cross-country wrestling, gymnastics. I've announced both prom and homecoming coronations. I was a chaperone on the last choir trip to Chicago, and I have worked to build sets and be backstage for several of the drama club productions. I have also served on many high school committees, including the building leadership team, technology committee, behavior task force, and the scholarship committee. I believe that I have made a material contribution to the Rice Lake area school district, as have many other teachers. As an experienced professional, I understand the challenges of maintaining a balanced budget. I also understand the importance of having professionals in a service business that is education. I believe that I have earned the right to retire when that time comes and have my medical insurance covered until Medicare kicks in. There are other ways to make the budget balance. There are other ways to take care of your people. Because compensation is such a large expense, this is an easy way to save money. It is not the right way, nor is it the best way. Please take the time to save the benefits for your people and work hard to find other ways to balance this budget. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we, now I would entertain a motion to approve the special session and regular session meeting minutes from Monday, October twenty-eighth. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and the minutes have been approved. Next, we need to elect a vice president to take Steve's spot. He was the vice president, and now that he is no longer able to be on the board because he doesn't live in our district any longer, we need to have a vice president until April.
I would like to nominate Don Cuskey for that job.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations? Do we have any other nominations?
I'm trying to think of someone.
Do I have a motion to cast a unanimous ballot?
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and Don will take the role of the vice president.
Congratulations. I hope I can serve as well as Steve did.
All right, thank you for that. Next, we have the consent agenda, our monthly budget report, our board bills. We have three employment resignations, and we have seven employment recommendations. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I would so move.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the consent agenda has been approved. All right, next we have our, we have a commendation.
Yes.
There you are.
Yes, snuck up here on you, but wanted to take a couple of minutes to do a commendation for Jenny Jensen. Jenny was recently nominated for and received the Innovation in Education Award from the Rice Lake Chamber of Commerce. And then she was honored at a banquet last Thursday at Turtleback. And with that, she can't be here tonight because she's teaching a class, which she does on Monday nights. But Jenny has been employed in the Rice Lake Area School District since the fall of nineteen ninety-nine as a physical education teacher. She's been our summer academy coordinator, frankly, for as long as I can remember. And every year, I know she, you know, she does a lot, but one of the fun things she gets to do is she coordinates and takes it on. Tainter does a themed track meet, and I know Jenny does a lot of themed things during the year in her role as a physical education teacher. So wanted to, wanted to, as I said, wanted to take a minute and give her that recognition she deserves and for being nominated for and receiving that Innovation and Education Award. So, thank you.
Congratulations to Jenny. All right. Next, I have a proclamation of American Education Week from November eighteenth through the twenty-second. Whereas the public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, equality. And whereas by not, or by equipping young Americans with both practical skills and broader intellectual abilities, schools give them hope for the access to and a productive future. And whereas education employees work tirelessly to serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. And whereas schools encourage community, bringing together adults and children, educators and volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise. Now, therefore, I, Kevin Jensen, serving as the Board of Education President, do hereby proclaim November eighteenth through the twenty-second as the one hundred and third annual observation of American Education Week. And I would entertain a motion to approve that proclamation. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded, and it has been proclaimed American Education Week, November eighteenth through the twenty-second. All right, possible creation for the Board of Education Committee.
There's some questions on that that I was going to answer. So we met with, as a committee, well, Phil, Nellie, and I met with some of the administrators on October twenty-first, and we talked about really the purpose of the committee and what we want to do and how we want to work together with them. So that was about, well, over an hour-long meeting on the twenty-first of October. And then Phil, Nellie, and I met also the following week and went over some things. And we spoke to some leaders in the schools. We came up with a list of people for the program, and the following people have agreed to be a part. So we have two administrators, three board members, four or five high school teachers, three middle school teachers, one mentor teacher, and two parents. And basically, as far as a guide, what we're planning on using is the quick guide on making school climate improvements. But mainly, we just want to work with the staff and the administrators on, to see how we can grow our current programs, brainstorm ways to reduce barriers for student engagement, and foster the social, emotional, and academic well-being of all students. So, but it's something that we want to do, you know, collaboratively, because we have a lot of wonderful things going on. We're just hoping that with working as a committee, we can help grow those and support them. Did I miss anything, Phil?
Not really. Think without a discussion like this, it's, it's hard for us to know how we can better support these people. Because it takes time. It's not fair to ask them to put in all this time without compensation. And if we're gonna come up with new ideas, it's probably going to take more time. And it probably is going to take some resources from outside. I just think of what they're doing at football games, you know, they're shooting T-shirts into the stands. Well, two or three, but if we can get a plan, I think we could support from the community to maybe print up more T-shirts and just make it more fun. And just come up with some new ideas, and maybe a few of those new ideas will require a little bit of funding, but certainly not major funding. So, yeah, I think we just want to build on the good things that are happening, and maybe with the discussion, we'll come up with a few additional ideas as well.
Could you state the purpose again? Well, that was kind of unclear to me.
Right, no, and that's something we want to work on with the committee, but as far as for now, we decree a mission statement that, let's see, what is it? I wrote it down here. Let's see, so basically, to the Wire Connections mission is to increase student engagement and student, student interactions. And we may expand on that with the committee, but that's where we're starting with.
So when you guys, I have a question, sorry Diane. So when you guys come up with something that you want to work on, who's in charge of like implement, implementing whatever idea or whatever?
Well, obviously, we have a guideline here.
Okay.
And so if you read through it, there's five steps through it, and the last step is to implement it, and that's where like Randy is going to be on the committee.
So he'll have some oversight, I guess.
And then for now, Mark Bice is on the committee. We may alternate, you know, different administrators in and out. But, you know, like I said, it's something, we want to have different groups of educators representing different areas of the school.
Okay.
And, you know, leaders that are respected and kind of come together for the betterment of the school, you know.
And this is a board committee that were, that would be put together, so they would have to bring anything to us before implementation would be allowed or guess, accepted or move forward.
Or changing policies or something like that.
Policy has to change, or if, if programs have to change, and there's going to be finances involved, those types of things all have to come through the full board.
Yeah, I'd just like to emphasize that a little bit. Nothing we do is mandatory. Our job is to come up with ideas to increase student connections, to hopefully improve the interaction between students by a significant amount so fewer students are left out of those student interactions. And when there is a problem, then it goes through that large funnel of student interactions down to the small end of the funnel, which is where the counseling staff and everything would come in. But nothing's compulsory, just like.
Can you give an example?
Kevin, Kevin said, just like, just like Kevin said there, you know, if we come up with any recommendations, we'll bring them to the whole board for discussion. And you can shoot them down or choose to follow through on them, but without some sort of official forum like this, it's hard to get the ideas. I mean, you, you can't implement an idea just because Phil says so, or just because Miriam says so. I think you need the collaboration and the official mechanism of this type of committee so that it warrants serious consideration from administration.
So when you guys met, you must have thought of some ideas or things that maybe could be worked on. So could you just give us an example, because I'm having a hard time seeing what we're trying to accomplish?
Okay, so we're just board members, you know, and that's why we're having a committee so that we can work together, you know, with the staff, with people that are experienced in this area. As board members, we have had people approach us with concerns, and that's not what we're about. We're not here, you know, we're here to promote positive things, but we also want to promote all the good things that are going on in our school, but also make sure that, that all these, that kids are being included, that there's not bullying going on, that there's, you know, that, just basically have different activities for all different groups of kids.
This is going to be more student-centered than like staff-centered.
Yes, I don't know where staff came from. That was never a thing.
Okay. Well, when I looked at the packet that you sent us, and that looked like a climate study with a lot of surveys and a lot of meetings and a lot of analyzing. And so that kind of, that doesn't sound like what you're trying to do. I don't think you're trying to do a climate study. You're just trying to take a look at, hey, is there some things in our district that we could do to make school more fun for kids? Right.
Right, I mean, I think it's important, you know, like I said, we're not, this isn't our profession, right? So I think it's important to have guidelines to follow, so we're going to loosely follow this because this is not our area of expertise, you know, with the recommendations of staff members, administrators, and so on. So basically, we just, you know, we know we have a great school. We want to help, you know, promote it, but also add some support, you know, and we're needed. And, you know, it's, we need some good PR, and there are, I mean, just talking to the administrators, there's a lot of good things going on, but I don't think everybody's aware of it, and if we can help support it and help grow it, why not, you know, if it's good for our kids.
And, and I'd like to add too, we have still not had a first meeting just among board members to get ourselves organized. We had a first meeting with, with a number of administrators there to give us ideas and things like that. But yet, this, this guide that you saw, that is just kind of a framework. We are not interested in memorizing that and implementing that in detail necessarily.
Well, because I'm thinking if, if that was an example that you were trying to show us of what you're going to do, and it looked like surveys, a survey or multiple surveys would be part of that, I'm wondering if we're not already able to use some of the surveys that we already have had to get that information rather than creating a new.
So that is something that we can do, and we have looked at the, like I just gave that to Phil, the Youth Risk Behavior Studies and the ACT, most like surveys. And they are helpful. I don't, you know, there are statistics that show that it's important to do a survey before and after something like this to see if we've actually had any growth, right? And so the difficulty with, with some of these surveys is that it's not all the grade levels. And so it's really hard to, they're good, but it's really hard to say, okay, we've grown, because it's like it might be, and don't quote me on this, but it might be seventh and tenth grade one year. And so, and so we, it's hard to get clear data. So I don't want to say that we're not going to do a survey, because it does make sense to do a before and after survey to see if we've grown. So, yeah.
I think an example, Diane, maybe, is, I know we had talked about it. I don't even want to put it out there because I don't want people to think that this is happening. But like, one of the football games recently had hardly any students, hardly anybody there. I mean, it was, it was empty. And in fact, the other team's cheerleaders were cheered at halftime
Okay.
on the field. And so, I mean, maybe one of those things is, well, maybe we bring back cheerleaders, or maybe the Warriorettes come to the football games to get the kids engaged in the game. You know, so that they're not just sitting there doing this during the game. But, you know, that's just an idea.
Well, and talk about surveys. I think good survey is something Nellie brought up, just how many, how many kids are coming to games? I mean, there's going to be an eyeball survey. How many kids are involved in things? You know, like the YRBS surveys, thirty-two percent response. You can't really do much about with a survey like that. Because of a thirty-two percent response, only people that are happy with the way things are probably not going to respond. So we're not, I don't know that we're gonna do specific stuff like that, but I think there's surveys that, like Nellie said, that are easier to do, that we can certainly use at the start and at the end and say, hey, a lot more people are coming to this than had been before.
Has anybody asked our administrators if they feel like this would be something worth their time? Because it obviously would take a good amount of their time to get involved in something like this. And I don't know if we can really expect them to add something more to their plate that's already quite full.
Yeah, I agree. That's why we only, we're limiting it to two at this time, you know, and we've talked to Randy about it. So that, I don't think you totally understand what we're doing. We're not adding to their plate. We're wanting to support them and help them.
Okay.
You know, and may, you know, if there's more funding needed, great, you know, and we're wanting to promote what they're doing. But I guess, I guess what I understand is if it's for the betterment of the students, why wouldn't we do it?
I'm all for that. I just worry that we're creating a committee to do that. I just, that's my only holdback. Is there any way we can push this forward without like having to do the committee or formalize that tonight? Or, because I hate to stop momentum. You guys have good momentum. I just worry that it's harder to dissolve a committee than it is to start a committee up.
What about working with our?
And once we okay it tonight, or if we're going to okay it tonight, then how do we stop that rolling ball?
I know. What about working with our current student organizations who are trying to get activities and things going? What about going that route rather than getting staff involved?
No, that's exactly what we want to do. I mean, we're, one of the main things we're going to look at is the Warrior Leadership Team. And there's a limited number of staff involved with that, as I understand it. And until we look at that and come up with ideas and see what they need, we don't know whether they need extra staff, whether they need more time off from the classroom teaching to do the student thing. If that's what they want to do, how much compensation is fair to do that? You know, so we're, we're asking for, for volunteers. And as far as the burden on administration, you know, if this works like we think it can, and the student environment is better, it's going to be easier on administrators. It's going to be easier on classroom teachers, because everybody's going to be a little bit happier.
Yeah, but to me, having it student-driven makes a lot more sense, because they're the ones that know what students like. They're the ones that know what kind of problems are going on in the school. There's, they're the ones that will come up with ideas that they think are really fun and that other kids will like. We don't know what those ideas are. I just think that a student-driven effort like this would be much more beneficial, and let our teachers spend their time on educating our kids. We talk about the importance of raising our test scores, our reading, our math, our science, our history. We talk about that, and we talk about trying to improve curriculum. Shouldn't that really be the focus of public education, is improving the education we're providing those students? And then let the students come up with these ideas that will make school fun or address concerns that they have.
You know, Diane, I actually agree with you to a point.
You know, Diane, I actually agree with you to a point. Because I think I recommend the committee. I don't know where they're going on this, but, you know, to have the students represented, but I, I still think there should be a teacher. And my question is, are we looking at elementary, middle and high, or are we just looking at high school? I don't know, but I, I, I agree with to a point. I think maybe there should be a different teacher each time or input into the committee. You know, you talk about students knowing what's going on. I gotta tell you, there's some teachers that know what's going on.
Sure. So basically with the committee, what we're looking at is we, you know, like we said before, we do want to bring students in. We do want this to be student led. And so when we're looking at committee members, we're bringing, you know, what happens, I think some of the complaints that we've had is that our school focuses so much on athletics. And, which is good, like we have great athletics, but we want to bring in kids from all different areas, you know, and so with listening to the public, with listening to concerns, we want to bring in teachers from different areas. So yes, we want to bring in the leaders of the Warrior Leadership Team, right? The, you know, Mr. Schradl and Zuzak, they're key parts of this group. And then next, they're going to bring the students in and talk to them. But we don't want to burn them out. So we're just having a small group together. So we're going to bring in the ag teacher. We're going to bring in the teacher that runs robotics. We're going to bring in choir. So there's a lot of kids that are saying, well, we don't get an opportunity, or it's just a popularity contest. So instead of just saying, okay, let's just have a popularity contest and see what leaders, you know, who should be, you know, this leader, we're wanting to bring in teachers from all different areas. Because we've been accused of not being diverse, of not having different groups be leaders. So we're actually wanting to deal with this situation. And so we are bringing in teachers that represent all different areas, who will then bring in the kids. So, but these are people that are not burnt out, but are interested in coming on. So it's not like we're begging them or saying, you know, take time out. They want to, they, they care about all kids and want to bring them in.
I would ask if we don't go ahead with this, what we're saying, it's the status quo. What's the alternative? This is, this is not a frivolous thing. This is an important thing. We're not saying classes more fun. You don't have to bring your homework. You can come late to class. None of that. Academics, you know, people, kids have to achieve. What we want kids to do is form friendships and relationships and also enjoy coming to school and presumably fewer kids are going to feel bullied or whatever, like you saw on those tests. And like I said, that would, that will improve discipline. It should make work easier for the administrators. I would think that teachers' jobs are going to be more enjoyable when the kids are interacting more, probably informally doing a little more self policing because of the interactions and probably better behaved, more focused in the classroom as a result, too.
I agree. And I do think that if they're not engaged, if they're not having fun, if, if it's just drudgery and misery, I mean, they're not going to do well in school.
So we've got two young high school students sitting right over there. Going to put you on the spot. You can say, yeah, rather not get into this.
I'm up with a plan.
I would, curious of what your thoughts are, hearing what we're saying. We're trying to make the school environment better than it is now. And make it so kids want to be part of activities and, and involved more than what they are now. Do you think that's something that this board should be looking at? Or do you think things are pretty good at this high school? What are your thoughts?
I mean, yeah, that's one of the goals of the Warrior Leadership Team right now. Like, we're trying to, that's the purpose of GoFan. One of the purposes is so that we can track who's going to games. We can track who's going to different things. And so we have like a list and we don't need to keep track on like paper, like we know exactly who we don't know about, we know exactly. And I'm also a part of mentorship. It's within leadership. It's within the high school and it's just trying to get more people involved, like mostly underclassmen, but anybody who's not in a club. We're assigning somebody and it's kind of in the starting stages right now. So we're assigned somebody and then we're like, we reach out to them. We say, hey, you know, we're here for you. We want to get you interested in some clubs. Do you have any ideas? And then we get them joined in a club and then we just like follow up. Like, so that's one of the things we're trying to do. And as far as you guys, I don't, if you, I don't, I guess I don't really know exactly if you guys should, I think there is sort of a need. I mean, we're doing what we can and so maybe just think about doing it and like get some stuff prepared for now and then see where we can, we can take it as like leadership and see where we can get the student body to. And then see if there needs to, you guys need to intervene later. I don't.
I mean, yeah, I definitely think that there should be probably more like people just trying to get more kids to join more clubs. Because I definitely think there's a lot of people that, in the high school that want to be in clubs, but they just don't have the encouragement or people to tell them to join those clubs. Or the friends that think they're better than them or just don't want to do it because they think they get made fun of by their friends. And I think there should probably be more encouragement to join those clubs that most people wouldn't join.
That makes sense.
Well, and, and I think we've discussed this also. We want to come up with some new ideas. I mean, it's possible no one's thought of all the ideas yet. And maybe it's more than just joining clubs. I think with the Warrior Leadership Team, what did with the bonfires was great. Just pure fun. It's not a club. You don't have to have an agenda to do anything specific. You just socialize and enjoy your friends and probably make some new friends. And there's got to be more activities like that that can reach the general student body. And if you guys come up with the ideas, that's great, but then you can tell us what you need, what resources you need. To what somebody on that end of the table said, you know, why do we need a committee? Yeah, I'm, I feel the same about committees, but this is going to be a limited committee. We'd like to be done with this work by the end of the school year. Interview who we can interview, make a list of ideas that we have, resources we might need, people that we might want to add to the team. And, and just see if we can, like you said, expand what they're doing. But just because we're old fogies doesn't mean that we can't remember our high school years and, and think what we'd like to do. I certainly can, because I certainly did not have fun in high school. And I would, like everybody, have more fun than I did.
And like I, you know, like I think you said, like, you know, I think there's a lot of great things going on in the school, but when you look at the youth risk behavior study, right now, there's, you know, it says 45% of kids feel like they're bullied at school. You know, so what can we do to make them feel more included, you know? So I'm not okay with that. I mean, it might not be easy. It might not be fun, but I don't mind putting in the extra work to help those kids feel included, to help them be a part, even if, you know, they're not, you know, if we can find something, I think the mentorship team is doing wonderful things. My own daughter's a part of that. But there's a very small group of kids that are doing that out of the whole Warrior Leadership Team. And so it's wonderful and I love that those kids are doing that, but what can we do to help with that? You know, 35% of kids feel that they don't belong at school. So it's like, okay, this is the same statistics for the last, since 2019. So I don't think it hurts for us to talk to teachers, us to talk to administrators, what can we do to support?
Do you have any data or information that lead you to believe that things are worse now than they were before 2018?
I don't know that that's even relevant because
I think every kid matters.
If we can improve it.
Well, I'm just thinking, isn't part of feeling bullied just part of being an adolescent? I mean, everybody goes through times where they think they're uglier or they're not as smart or they're not as whatever. It's just part of being an adolescent is you feel inadequate at times to others. And I bet you almost everyone that you would ask felt like that. I bet you everyone at this board, if you'd asked, did you ever feel inadequate in high school? I bet you we could all say yes. So I don't know if it's a, if it's a huge new problem that we have to spend a lot of time and create a board committee to take care of. I think we might be blowing it out of proportion.
And where do you get that? Where do you get that from?
Where do I get that from?
Like, I mean, is it with talking with students or where are you getting this from?
It's, it's human behavior.
What do you think, Randy?
I think at this point, you know, I, I think what you're trying to do is, is, you know, not saying things are awful, but can they, can we improve on some things? And I think that's where your conversation has been focused on is, is, you know, what can, we're doing some good things. What are some possible other things we can do to make things better?
And I don't think this is unique to us. I mean, this is across the nation right now. There's just a.
Societal issue.
Yes.
It isn't unique to us. It's everywhere. Yeah, no, I mean, Rice has so many things going on and that's not, I'm not saying that, but personally, I'm not happy with status quo. I'm not happy with, you know, well, it's okay that some kids feel bullied because why start a committee? I mean, that's now I'm here on the board, you know, so. It's like if we can help students, if we can support Warrior Leadership Team, if we can support, if we can bring students in from all different areas that don't feel like they have a voice, then why wouldn't we? You know, I mean, because to me, if it helps one kid, why wouldn't we?
Well, I know I, I personally am not focused on the bullying. I think, like I said, the surveys you see there, people that are satisfied generally don't respond. So it's, I mean, you have to look at trends rather than quantities from those surveys. But we do need to find ways that, that students don't fall through the cracks and do bad things. And I think the best way to do it is to have this spider web of interactions. Which is much more likely to catch problems than saying there are three open doors. If you have a problem, go see a counselor. I mean, the counselor, it's not their job to sift through the student body. It's their job to treat a problem when it comes to them. But if the problem never comes to them, it's never going to be solved. And this is a, a, a very low cost solution. It's going to be a lot of work for some of us. I just really don't see the downside unless we, unless we, I shouldn't say unless, I don't see the downside because I think we're going to focus on positive things and common sense solutions.
Would it be too much of an imposition to ask a couple of our principals to comment? Or are you not prepared to do that?
Anybody want to get on the hot seat?
I mean, I guess I'd like to know, do you guys want this? Do you need us to do this? I mean, we're the Board of Education. We take care of overseeing the business of the school district. And I don't know if us getting involved in these social things is the right thing. And I'd like to know what our principals think. Do you need us? Because you kind of have.
As you kind of say about, I mean, we do have building leadership teams. We have some councils. And so I could see a scenario where it's like, this is something that we would like to see.
Excuse me, Josh, could you come up so that way they can hear you on the live stream?
As I'm thinking about it, it's, you know, we very well, we have building leadership teams that have basically people from across, a cross section of our staff. So we have special ed staff. And so working with potentially like our student council with direction from you guys where it's like, hey, we really want to address positive interactions with students. I could see a scenario where we bring that as an agenda item for the rest of the year. Work with our student councils to try and come up with some ideas within the structures that we currently have in the building. So I mean, that would be another way to approach it.
So you would see value in having a board committee that would bring ideas to you?
No, I, I think, you know, this is the particular area that we want addressed. You know, it seems like that's been kind of chosen. So I don't know that we would necessarily need ideas from the board to, to do that. And these are things that we're constantly thinking about from, you know, I mean, weekly I, I do a pupil services meeting. I do a PBIS tier two meeting. And so in all those meetings, these are things we're talking about. Am I going to sit here and say, we have it all right? Absolutely not. I mean, it's all about continuous improvement. And so could there be some new ideas that come out of a board committee like this? Absolutely. But I don't know that in order to address this particular topic, that you would have to have a, a committee, if that makes sense, so.
So what you're saying is, as a board, we could ask our administrative team.
That makes sense.
This is the priority for our students. Can you guys come up with some suggestions and bring them back to us and then we can?
You know, task our student council. I mean, we're, today we had a great event at the middle school Veterans Day program. It's a great event. Our kids form a committee, they implement it. But we're always looking for real life things for them to do. And I think there's times where we're trying to create, you know, those, those opportunities. This would be one where it's like, the board needs you. We need to improve this. So again, I, I'm not speaking against this, but just, this would be another way to attack it, I think. So, and I'm losing my voice.
Josh, can I ask you, do you think that it would be helpful to focus attention on it? And kind of provide a little more district wide unification to the effort? And be a little bit closer to where you get more resources for those events?
You know.
Wouldn't those be all positives?
Yeah, again, I'm not, not speaking against it. I'm just, you know, here would be another way to attack it. So.
Do you feel like the PR right now for the district is, is positive? I mean, do you feel like the, the public knows all the good that we're doing? And do you feel like, you know, like I feel like we've been bashed a lot lately. You know, between, you know, with bullying and this, you know, the suicides, which are all horrible, horrible things that we've been bashed. We haven't done enough. So here we're trying to come forward and promote the positive things and promote, make sure that we're addressing all those areas. But I mean, do you feel right now that, that PR wise, we're doing okay? We, this isn't necessary?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's always something we, you know, as I've, I've been doing this for quite a while now. Communication is always, in fact, I, I sent, you know, our, our quarter one newsletter to the board just with that idea that, you know, as we were having conversation at that initial board, it's like, I need to do a better job of, of, you know, just, what are we doing? That's, that's great. How are we connecting kids? What kind of curriculum are our kids experiencing? And so, you know, I sent that to the board just in an effort to try and do that. How do we get that to our community as well? You know, obviously that went home to parents, but is there a way to get, excuse me, that in the, the hands of our community members as well? Again, we can constantly work on that, right?
Well, and I, we do have as a board, we do have a standing committee that is the PR committee. And that's part of what that committee was put together for initially, was to get the communication out to our community of all the good things that are happening here. And, and maybe we need to, as a committee there at that level, need to step up that part and look even harder at what we're doing or what we can do to get some of this information out. Because yeah, there's a lot of good things. The Warrior Leadership Team and the stuff that we've got going on at the middle school. The warrior leadership team and the stuff that we've got going on at the middle school, all the way down to the fifth grade group. I mean, they do some awesome things. And so many times, our community and us as board members, because we're not there living it day to day, we don't, we don't get to hear it all.
Yeah, and you know, speaking to, to some of the things that get out there on social media and whatever, those, those are, are difficult because we can't respond to them. And, you know, they, they tend to grow legs. I think there's times where just those negative things tend to spiral and it's a lot of miscommunication. It's a lot of unfactual pieces. But unfortunately, we are not in a spot where we can go respond to them. Yeah, you know, there are those things out there, but there's an awful lot of positive too.
People, people like to spread bad news faster than good news.
No doubt about it.
Well, and it's true. And I feel like those things aren't fair to you guys. I felt like this committee is a wonderful way, not necessarily to respond, but, but you know, like our PR committee, we've discussed how we feel limited in what we can do. And we do notice, you know, the bad PR. So this is a good way to respond and promote it, but also grow, you know, and, you know, I, I mean, I, we, our committee is excited. They want to get going. They see the need, but I mean, if Diane doesn't and you guys don't, then I guess we don't need to go forward. But I feel like our committee is really excited and we have some really good groups of teachers together. So, and frankly, I mean, as a board member, I do feel like we have to listen to our constituents and when they're concerned. And we have 200 kids open rolling to other schools. It's like, we need to do better, you know? We need to do better. We, you know, well, I'm moving my kid to Cameron because there's not bullying, or I'm moving my kid here because there's not bullying. Do, is that true? No, not necessarily. But because I think every school has bullying, but are we doing enough? You know, are we, are we doing everything we can? And I think that's what this committee is, you know, bringing people together from all different groups, you know?
Yeah.
And the warrior leadership team is wonderful. There's a lot of good things, but you know, it's like led by class reps who are voted on by a popularity contest. So again, it's like, can we do better? Yeah, we can.
Yeah, and I, and I think as you talk to any of us administrators, I mean, we're here for kids. And if there's something that could come out of this that would be positive for kids, none of us are, are going to argue against that, so.
I'm positive for enrollment too. I mean, we're hurting budget wise. We, 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 I mean, in my opinion, and it's just my opinion, we have so much, you know, compared, I shouldn't say that, compared, we, in this area-
We have a lot to offer.
Our school district has so much to offer academically and staff wise and AP classes and athletics and robotics. We have so much. We should be having people breaking down the door doors to get their kids in here. And it's the opposite. And it's like, okay, what else can we do? And I think there is more we can do.
I do think though, Miriam, that some of those kids just do better in a smaller school atmosphere. And we, we can't, we can't fix that.
Right. No, I agree that, but yes, I agree, that would account for a percentage. But if we, I think we should have 200 kids open rolling in our school, you know, not out. And so anyways, I, you know, I mean, I think it would be good. Thank you, Josh. But-
I think one thing that Phil said earlier, if I read you right, that this committee would exist approximately a year. And if that's the case, I think I'm fine for it because then let's see what they can do. Let's see what happens. Let's see what the outcomes are. Let's see what the benefits are. And at this end of a given year, you know, 12, 14 months, well, we didn't make the impact we thought. We were a little bit this, or look at what happened. This is what happened. You know, I certainly don't think it's going to hurt to try for a year to see what you guys can do. But didn't you say that? You said it was only for a year? Maybe I misread you.
The end of the school year.
Less than a year.
Okay. The end of the school year.
What if you, what if you do some trial, let's say, until June 30th? Do your meetings, come up with ideas, then report back to us and let's see where you're at then. Can we just move to a vote?
I don't see that as a problem. I think that's kind of what we're shooting for anyway.
Right. So hopefully this is not a forever. Can we just move on to a vote?
And, and you know, we, we may not come up with a lot that's new. I don't consider that a failure. I mean, why would that be a failure?
Oh, sorry.
That would just mean that everyone has thought of every good thing already. So.
And honestly, since we've been meeting, that has come about is, is we've discovered, like Jeff said, you know, lots of things that have-
That we had no idea, right?
That we didn't know about.
So we can bring that to the PR committee and promote it, like, like just from what Josh, Lori, Kurt have said, it's like, oh, wow, that's so cool you guys are doing that. Wow. You know, like, we can build on that. We can bring that to the PR committee and move on.
Before, I'm sorry.
But I do want to move on to motion for a vote.
Yeah, before we move this forward. So if we decide to implement this, it's, what, what ends it? I mean, do we have to then have a motion someday to say, we are now dissolving the-
No, the, the committee has, has, as the discussion-
They're going to self dissolve?
It'll be self dissolved unless we implement it again at the end of June and say, we're going to keep it going for another six months or another year or whatever the board decides to do at that time. But as it stands right now, it would be done the end of June.
Okay, let's go.
And I want to say one more thing to defend ourselves. We have not even had our, our first meeting as the three of us. We haven't had a chance to set our goals and define what the endpoint should be. We do intend to do that.
Well, that's where I feel bad. It's like, we're trying to approve the committee and you haven't even had a committee meeting yet. So to, that's where we're kind of at this stuck place. But I'm willing to vote for it just to move it forward because I think it's a, going to be a good thing, but I just don't know how we ever get rid of it. But I'm hearing that there is a, you know, this is an ongoing forever committee.
No, I mean, I, the board can, this is an ad hoc committee. The board can vote and say, hey, we've heard enough of this stuff.
We could, technically, we could dissolve it next month.
Well, I know, but I don't, I mean, I, you know.
That will end, as it stands right now, it would end the end of June. I do have a motion to call for a vote. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion hasn't been made and seconded to call for a vote. So we will be voting on whether we will create the new ad hoc committee.
I'd like to make a friendly amendment, that that ad hoc committee will sunset on June 30th of 2024.
Records will show that, that we'll have a sunset date of June 30th of 2025. And with that, any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Oh, aye to that.
Opposed? And that committee has been given the green light to move forward. All right, good luck. Next, we have our finance committee meeting update. And Phil is going to give us an update on-
Yeah, this is, this is the third string finance committee update because the head guy retired. The next guy left town. And they said, you want to give the report?
It's that good a report, huh?
Oh, it's wonderful.
Everybody run the other direction?
And, and because I've done such a good job and Steve liked the Wasby report so well, that's, that's what happened, you know? Thought I was ready for it. So we had a, a meeting on Thursday, November 7th, and we had Bert, Doug, and myself there because Steve, I don't think was, was there at that meeting anymore, and Randy and Victor. And we moved, we moved to approve the previous minutes without any problems. We elected Doug to be the new chair of the committee unanimously, three to zero. We heard about how there's possibility that some esports clubs want to start up, the Rice Lake Middle School and Rice Lake High School, which would require probably some modest degree of funding. And we talked about that and brought up a few other considerations that can be looked into first. We talked about the review and approval of bills. And there were no problems with that. We set the next meeting date. And the last thing, which I went out of order for, was that we discussed the OPEB trust and we discussed some possible changes to the health insurance benefits of retirees. And we discussed the, the different forms of insurance that we could offer and that, that people in society are faced with these days. And we discussed also ways that, that we can be fair with employees and, and the impact of the changes and everything. So, and we discussed some of the comments that we'd received. So that will be getting further consideration. Then we motioned to adjourn the meeting at 9:32.
Can you share any of the details on your discussion regarding health insurance?
Details.
Or is that something you can't share at this time?
Well, I would think we could is, I can do the best I can here, being third string. From memory-
Victor, maybe?
Is, is Victor here? Oh, perfect.
He was hiding back there, kind of.
It was just, looked at those draft, the draft piece that was sent out recently to staff. And those recommendations had come from the committee. I'm going to be going around to every building here in the next couple of weeks to talk about a number of things, but that being one of them. And yeah, they said if there's things we need to look at or potentially adjust, you know, potentially come back with that. But I, I think, I don't know if you want to add anything else or Phil wants to add anything else. Those were the main pieces. But that draft, those draft changes were, you know, in the board packet from, from our last meeting.
Well, basically for the numbers wise, as I recall, the people hired, was it before 1986?
The-
Or was it 96? We're, we're going to stay on the, the full stipend toward the-
Yeah, the, the language in the handbook now breaks it down by a year of hire-
Right.
And how much, and how much the district contributes toward the health insurance premium. And so with that, the draft language was, and, and people can stay on the plan after they retire. Draft language said, anyone hired after July 1st, 2015 would not be on the plan anymore and would receive $1,500 a year in an HRA and it would be backfilled. So that was the initial draft.
Any other questions? If not, thank you for that update. Next, we have the district administrator observation committee meeting.
Um, yeah, that's me. We met Wednesday, October 30th. Steve called the meeting to order at five. All our members were present and then there was a statement given. And Diane and Phil elected me, the chair of the committee.
Oh, you lobbied us.
I lobbied hard, yes. There was much lobbying and filibustering and I was elected. We approved the minutes from August 26th. We then went into closed session to discuss the administrator evaluation that we all had filled out, or eight out of nine of us filled out. And we'll be talking about later. And then came back into open and adjourned.
Any questions? Okay, thank you for that update. Next, we have policy 683, policy 850 and rule 850 that are coming back for a second reading. Anybody have any discussions on any one of those three? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve those three items. So moved. Motion hasn't been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion hasn't been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
I-
Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, next we go to the information section of our agenda and we'll start off with the handbook committee meeting update.
Yeah, so the handbook committee, just as a reminder for listeners and board members, is a group made up of representatives from the custodial staff, support staff, food service group, teacher group, building administrators and central office administrators. So they meet four times a year to look at the handbook and consider any changes. And, and we're operating under the same handbook we had last year at this point. We are, a group of us here have been working to transition to WASB's template. We continue to work on that, but you can see the notes from our meeting there. And then I'm going to jump right into communications. Again, a committee that meets four times a year to talk about what's happening in the different buildings and different pieces related to, you know, communication within the buildings and communications within the district. Are you okay if I jump right into school drill evaluation there, Mr.? I should say, sorry, I jumped into the, anybody have any questions on either of those committee minutes?
All right. If not, yes, then we'll jump right into the school drill evaluation.
So the school drill evaluation, this is required by law that you see these as a board member annually. And with that, this is part of the information, like this one was from Hilltop Daycare and Preschool. Because we contract with them, they've, we need to follow the same rules that all our other school buildings do. You know, you recently saw one from the high school and, and our other buildings as well. So students have to participate in those drills during the course of the year. We're required to share those with you. And then every year by the end of the calendar year, and Colleen does all this work, but we have to report all those things as well as our safety plans to the Department of Justice. So.
Any questions? All right, thank you for that. Our WASB public policy correspondent update. Phil?
Items of interest, there were 121 school districts in Wisconsin that had financial referenda. 138 questions in those districts, 78% passed overall. 58 districts had a referendum concerning issuing long-term debt, 88% passed. 59 districts had referenda related to non-recurring debt, 70% of those passed. And 22 districts had recurring operational expenses and 77% of those passed. So quite a few passed. The Wisconsin election, the state senate is, has 18 Republican members and 15 Democrat members. And it had been, I think, 22 on 11. The House has 54 Republican members and 45 Democrat members. It had been 63 or 64 and, and 35, I believe. And Congress retains the six and two ratio. The DPI has put forward some budget proposals. They request an extra $42 million to implement early literacy initiatives in addition to the 50 million that's tied up in court between the joint finance committee and the DPI. The purpose of that is to increase personnel as needed, to increase the number of early literacy coaches that are available to implement this, et cetera. They recommend $60 million for various ways to recruit and retain teachers better, to increase stipends for student teachers and their mentors, et cetera. And they would like nearly $300 million to implement universal free meals, buying local initiatives and- buying local initiatives and converting to bulk milk from individual containers, for instance. The, let's see, that's not DPI. The Legislative Study Committee received a recommendation to increase school-based mental health services. And I don't exactly, I can't remember who that's from, but that's different from the, the DPI funding, obviously. And then item of interest in the national election, three states voted against private school vouchers in some form. Didn't really go into it, but there were Kentucky, Nebraska and Colorado. Two, two of those three are a little surprising, but yeah, there are reasons. So that's the end of my report.
Any questions? All right. Thank you for that. Upcoming meeting schedule. The big one I want to talk about is Wednesday, November 13th. There was a meeting scheduled to be at CISA, which was a workshop connecting with lawmakers. That has been discontinued, removed from our schedule. So that one will not be taking place. And then there are the virtual meetings on the Wednesdays of November 8th, November 20th and December 18th. So if you can check in on those, those are those legislative and legal video updates. And then we're getting closer to our January school board convention. So we've got three people signed up so far. If anybody else can get that on their schedule, please try to let Kline know as soon as possible. And that is the upcoming.
Kevin, could you just, for public information, go over November 18th, our board meeting that we're having for filling them?
Yes. So on November 18th, the board has called a special meeting to bring in. We have five people that have applied for the vacant position of Steve Bowman, who had moved away from our district and no longer able to sit on the board. We will be meeting and going through an interview process with those five individuals. Find out more about them, ask them some questions, and then we will be voting as a board to select one of those individuals to fill that vacancy. That vacancy would be filled then until the April, this next coming April election, where we normally would have three board members up for reelection. We will have four spots on the ballot. And the, of the four people that get the highest votes, the fourth, the one that, of the lowest of those four will take over Steve's spot, which has got two years left in his term. He was just reelected in April. So that is how that process works.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep. All right. With that, now we get to hear the exciting stuff from our students. What have we got going on?
Hi, so I'm Aubrey Musel and this is Luke Schiefer. I'm a 12th grader and he's a ninth grader at the Rice Lake High School and we're both class reps. Sorry. We just have a couple of things to talk about that we've been doing and some just announcements from the high school. So starting off, the football team won on Friday at New Richmond. That was pretty exciting. So they play this Friday at Marshfield versus West the Pier. So there is going to be a fan bus and, yeah.
And then so girls' swimming state qualifiers was this weekend and Amara King, she's a freshman. She made it for diving, so she'll be going to state for diving for that. And then cross country and boys' soccers, their season's finished. Carter Kuchko and Clara Drost both made it to state for cross country. And Carter Kuchko finished with a time of 1556 and fourth place in state. So shout out to him.
Drama Club has been working on their production. There's not a lot of information out, but they're definitely working on it and I'm excited to see what they.
Just, just on Facebook there, but there it is. So you bet.
So yeah, they've been working on that. There's also, oh, robotics team. Their first competition is on November. And then they have a home competition December 7th. So they did pretty well last year. I think they had a couple of teams go to state. So I'm hoping it'll be the same, if not better this year. And then there's a new club that's kind of being created at the high school. It's called Books and Bytes. They have a meeting this Thursday and they're reading some Harry Potter and they're making snacks. Like kind of from the book, like kind of correlating.
So the, we had the rake and run a couple of weekends ago and that did really well. We got 17 total yards raked. And we received a lot of positive feedback from the peoples who's got their yards raked and some handwritten thank yous from people. So that was good.
FFA and Warrior Leadership Team are partnering up and we're doing a food drive. And so it's a competition. However, it's weekly and I think it's going for a month. Yeah, the month of November. So every week, the winner will get like donuts or cookies or breakfast made by the FFA. And so last week, Mrs. Doctor's class won it. So it's just the first period class, bringing in any non-perishable items. And then they count them up and whoever wins gets a prize. So we're hoping to get a little bit more involvement in the next couple of weeks, but so far we're doing really good.
And then we do a homeroom competition. And that will be next Monday and the competition is, it'll be rock, paper, scissors. So there'll be like a certain amount of kids competing from each grade and they'll go against each other. And the winners of each grade will go into the gym and that'll be livestreamed for the winners of each grade.
And then we have an upcoming blood drive. And in the past, we've only had one blood drive, but this year we're doing two. So we're going to have a blood drive for students and staff only on December 11th. And then March 26th, we're doing a community blood drive. So anybody from the community can come and donate and they're encouraged. Then that's at the high school too. So.
Did you say March 26th?
Yep, March 26th at the high school in the gym. So that's all we have. We, thank you for letting us come and tell about our high school.
Thank you for being here.
Good job.
For being here. All right. Next, we have district administrator comments.
I don't have a lot to say because they covered a lot. I'll just expand on the play a little bit. So yes, the drama club is, is presenting Little Women. And that's this weekend, Thursday through Saturday, 7:00 PM. And then Sunday at 2:00 PM, viewers can go to our Facebook page to check it out or, or just call the high school. General admission is $10, but students are free. And so with that, and I think that's one of the things you were talking about earlier with GoFan still tracking those things to, to see what students show up to. So. And they gave a special shout out to people in the community for, you know, costumes and props. Mrs. Amy Adams, Northern Star Theater, Red Barn Theater, Yiddo O'Clare, Barron County Fine Arts. So a lot of different groups and individuals coming together to make this possible. So just wanted to add to that. And also just wanted to take one more opportunity to thank our veterans on this Veterans Day. And with that, we had programs that the public was invited to. Mr. Tomisch alluded to the one at the middle school. Hogan Elementary had one as well. Mr. Henkel, did you make it out to that one?
I did.
Okay. I didn't get to that one, but so.
It was all worthwhile. There are a couple of songs performed by the kids. And just a little bit of background about the military, obviously. Real general for the little kids and the questions, you can imagine what some of the questions were. It was really funny. And the middle school event was really, really good.
Yeah, it was.
Very well attended.
Yes, middle school choir and band, students involved. And yeah, it was, it was impressive. Elementary parent teacher conferences next week, Tuesday and Thursday. So elementary parents who may be listening, if you're not signed up for that, please get signed up for it. And last piece, tomorrow's 4K Farm Day. So I'll take a horse, a donkey and some chickens and a goat from the Germanson Farm around and share those with 4K kiddos outside of their, their buildings.
I expect pictures in our update.
There you go.
All right. Thank you for that. And with that, I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes. 19.851E and 19.851C. And that is for a leave of absence request and a, the district administrator evaluation, which is our early eval process. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Miriam Barbara.
Here.
Bert Richard. Nellie Shire.
Yes.
Doug Kuchko. Diane Cozer.
Yes.
Don Kuski.
Yes.
Phil Henkel.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Yes. All right, we are in the closed.